Can everyone see my screen now? Awesome. So for question one, we have a diagram showing all the amino acids that are generated by one base substitution in the isolusing codons A U U and A U C. And for the first part of the question, we are asked for the frequency of isolusing to methionine mutation compared to isolusing to asparagen mutation, just based on this chart. So what we need to do for this first part of the question is to just look for how many mutations give you isolusing to methionine and isolusing to asparagen. So if you look at here, we have two that gives you methionine and then two that gives you asparagen over here. Yes. So for the first part of the question, we know that since the number of specified mutations is the same, which is two. And then there's eighteen total possible mutations that can happen. They're gonna have the equal frequency, which is both two over eighteen or one over nine. So simply based on the on this mutation chart, the frequency for isolusing mutated to methionine and isolusing mutated to asparagen is going to be the same. And for part two of the question, we have the blossom scores for the amino acid mutation from I M and I N and S I M is plus one and S I N is negative two. And we are asked to calculate the relative likelihood of isolusing to methionine and also losing to asparagen mutations. So by definition, we know that the substitution scores for amino acid I and J is defined as two times log base to the likelihood of seeing this mutation. And the reason we have S I J in the substitution, in the blossom matrix, instead of the likelihood, is just that the blossom, the blossom scores, the ace scores looks better than the likelihood scores. So if we rearrange it, we'll see that the likelihood for L I M over the likelihood for I N is equal to two to the power of substitution score divided by two. And since we know the substitution scores, we just need to plug in to this equation and you'll get the relative likelihood of these two types of mutations. And that's for part two. Are you any questions? Feel free to unmute yourself. All right, if not, I'm gonna move to part three. Is the relative frequency for isolusing to methionine and isolusing to asparagen mutation in part one consistent with the value calculated from blossom substitution matrix, which is in part two? If not, explain the origin of discrepancy. Obviously, it's not gonna be the same because part one, we have that we have this conclusion that based on the codon table, you're gonna have equal frequency of mutating. But for part two, we already know that they have different substitution scores and the substitution score for I M is positive and that's for I N is negative two. So we know that it's gonna be more likely for for isolusing to to be mutated to methionine in terms of one base substitution. Because the substitution scores is bigger for isolusing to methionine. And the reason for there is a discrepancy is because the substitution scores reflects the actual statistics of mutations in A A in proteins that survived evolution. And you can also probably tell why isolusing to methionine is more likely because isolusing and methionine are both hydrophobic, but asparagen is charged. It is polar, so in terms of the weak interactions between amino acids that form protein structures, a mutation from isolusing to methionine is more likely to survive evolution than a mutation from isolusing to asparagen. Because in, because the mutation from isolusing to asparagen may disrupt the weakened interactions and the structural or functional properties of the fold, of the fold. And the protein is not gonna work as they used to before. Are you any questions? All right, if not, I'm gonna stop my share.
All right. I think I'll be doing question two. Could I get access to chairman's screen, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Right. So yeah, for the first part of question two, it's asking. So it's giving you a human sequence and two variant sequences. And it's asking, based on the blossom matrix, which sequence is more closely related to the human sequence? So we can begin by looking at the significant or just looking at, we're actually looking at the sequences. So when we're comparing which one in B or C is more closely related to A, we only wanna focus on the positions that are different between A. So we can see that its positions one and three that are different between the two, so these, between the three, so these would be the only relevant ones to compare with human sequence A. And you can see that for A compared to B, it would be W to D, K to R. And for C, it would be W to R and K to F. So yeah, now that we know what amino acid substitutions are happening, we can use the blossom matrix to find the scores. So here's the blossom matrix, blossom sixty-two, I think. And the substitution score, each square on here is the substitution score, which is defined by the equation above, based on the likelihood between the I and J amino acid substituting in related proteins. So we can just, you know, look on the matrix and find the corresponding number. And the higher the number, the more, yeah, the higher the number, the more likely the substitution would occur in related proteins. So for example, for sequence B, if you wanted to find the tryptophan to I think that's a sparte, then you would have, then you would look along the axes and you'd find negative four. And for K to R, you'd find positive two. And so because it's defined, the substitution score is defined by the logarithm, logarithm of the likelihood, we can add the substitution scores together. And once again, you don't need to worry about the other positions because when you're comparing them, they won't make a difference because their positions two, two, four and five are the same between them. So you would compare A to B and A to C by adding the substitution scores and the result would tell you which sequence is more closely related to human, based on which has the highest total substitution score. All right, and the next question is asking, calculate, okay, does anyone have any question that, yeah, feel free to ask anything? So the next question is asking, calculate the relative likelihoods that two sequences are evolutionarily related to the human sequence. So we can look at the substitution score and see the likelihood and the substitution score are related by logarithm. So we can manipulate the logarithm to get the likelihoods for A compared to B and A compared to C. And you'd use the substitution scores you calculated from the last part of the question to get the likelihoods. And once you have these likelihoods, you can take the ratio to get the relative likelihood and you'll see that in S A V minus S A C, this is where amino acid substitutions that are the same between them would get canceled out if you did include them, which is why we didn't include them earlier. And the results of this would tell you how much more likely that A and B are related than A and C. Does anyone have any questions about that? All right. So the next question gives you a block of line sequences from related proteins. And it notes that GNA substitutions occur at as frequently as GNS substitutions. So based on the block, will these substitution scores for GNA and GNS be the same? And if they are different, which are higher? So, so yeah, here you can see each row would represent different protein. And then the important thing to note, you know, is that the GS and GA substitutions are equal, so that that definitely can't explain any sort of difference. So to find out if there is a difference, we could look at, you know, what defines the substitution scores and likelihoods. So, so here is sort of, in words, the likelihood. And you can see that substitution score is equal to logarithm of the likelihood as said earlier. And with the likelihood that I and J are substituted in related proteins, it's the frequency that the I and J substitution in that block occurs over the random frequency that you would find, like the two amino acids together. So for the denominator, we know that G, GS and GA substitutions are equal, so this isn't gonna really be a factor in determining if they're different or not. So that means we can look closer at the random frequency of serine and alanine. So here are the, this is the, how you'd find the random frequencies. And you can see it's just the chin, the random chance based on the number of amino acids in the block that GNA occurs and GNS, GNS occurs by just multiplying the probabilities. And you'd see the first term, obviously, the number of G in block and the total number of residues are the same, so the one distinct part is the number of A in the block overall and the number of S in the block. And whichever one, based on how we define the likelihood, whichever one has a higher random frequency is gonna lower the likelihood that the that the substitution is meaningfully meaningful and they're related. Because yeah, if there's a greater chance it occurs randomly, it's, you know, less likely to be less likely to be related. So you can qualitatively assess the amount of A and S in the block seen in here, and you can see, you'll be able to tell whether it's serine or alanine is higher. And whichever one is higher would increase the random frequency, which would lower the likelihood. And yeah, I think covers it. Does anyone have any questions? All right, stop the share, yeah, feel free to message me if you have any questions as well.
Okay, let's move on to question three. So feel free to ask me any questions during the process if you need to clarify anything. So this question, part A, we are looking at these two sequences. And fifty percent of the wild type sequence here has been, a little bit less than fifty percent is being mutated. And we can see mutated sequence down here on second lane. And if we highlight all of the changes between these two sequences, as I highlighted in them in green, you can see that most of the residues in the wild type sequence are hydrophobic. However, when we have these mutation happening on the mutant sequence one, we can see that most of the residues are being changed to either charged or hydrophilic residues. So normally, for the wild type sequence, we can, we can be quite confident that these hydrophobic residues are probably involved in protein folding and they can, they, they normally would reside in hydrophobic core of your folded protein. So if you were to mutate quite a lot of them to hydrophilic residues, that could disrupt the protein folding and therefore it's quite unlikely that the mutant sequence one would be able to fold into a well-type protein. So that's part A. Part B, we have four of these statement that we need to consider. So this is quite related to what you have seen in your lecture, especially on this slide. There's a cross-species, as you can see, the proteins, they fold conservatively, so they have all the same fold. However, if you look at the sequence similarities, we really just conclude there's no significant similarity. What does this mean? You have to understand that the first statement right here, sequence determines fold is true. However, the second one, sequence, the fold determine sequence is not true. Okay, so just because these proteins have very similar folds does not mean that they have similar sequence. That doesn't give you that. So now let's look at part B, the first, first statement. Because all of the globins bind the H group and oxygen, they must have evolved, become and evolved from a common ancestor. So as we know, H group is a cofactor to help the globins to perform their functions. However, in this statement, this is not necessarily true because proteins that binds to similar cofactor, they, they're not necessarily evolved from the, from a common ancestor. I can give you an example of a different protein, for example, cytosine. Cytochrome, I'm sorry, cytochrome C in the electron transport chain. As you can see right here, it binds to a H group. It does not necessarily have to be the same protein or it does not necessarily have to be evolved from a common ancestor. So the first statement is not true. The second statement right here, all globins that are the same three three-dimensional folds, so they must have evolved from a common ancestor. So there are only a very limited fold for proteins in nature. Therefore, you cannot say that i- if they have the same fold, then they're evolving from a common ancestor. Just like what I said earlier, that the fold does not tell you about how sequence is gonna look like. So that's number two. Now let's move to number three, although the sequence similarity is low, the same set of residues are always considered in globin, so they must have evolved from a common ancestor. So this statement, we are considering same sets of residues. These residues might be performing important function within this globin, these globin, I'm sorry. And it is okay to say, I would say, for this one, this statement's actually, you can consider it's a true statement because these important residues is probably conserve to perform these important functions. However, you still wanna be very careful because of what I just talked about in part one and part two, the fold does not determine the sequence. However, the reason that these important residue are conserved is because they perform very important task for the protein. Part four is probably a more, easier one to understand, I say, out of these three. It is actually a true statement that we can align these proteins across different species to construct a evolutionary tree to see how related each of the species against each other. Okay, so that's question number three. Are there any questions regarding this one? Okay, then we'll move to the next question.
Okay, so I will be going over question four. So in question four, we are given a set of aligned sequences. And here, we're eventually going to calculate the blossom substitution score for an alanine glycine substitution based on this sequence block. So the first part asks us so the first part asks us, what is the probability of finding A and the probability of finding G randomly at any position? So to clarify, this question asks about the separate probabilities of finding A and G so that we can calculate each probability on its own. So first of all, the probability of finding A in this alignment randomly at any position is just equal to the total number of alanines divided by the total number of residues. And then similarly, the probability of finding glycine randomly at any position or P G is equal to the number of glycines in this, in the sequence block divided by, again, the total number of residues. That's going to give us the independent probabilities of finding alanine and finding glycine anywhere at any position. Then part two asks us to calculate the random or expected probabilities of finding an A G substitution randomly anywhere in this sequence block. So note that since this asks for the expected probability, it doesn't matter for this question, how many A G substitutions there actually are. So here, we're trying to find out what is the probability of finding a glycine randomly at one position and finding an alanine at another position. So now an A G substitution can refer to either an alanine to glycine substitution or a glycine to alanine substitution. So we need to consider both of these probabilities, which actually turn out to have the same value. So the probability of an alanine to glycine substitution is just going to be probability of alanine times the probability of finding a glycine, both of which we found in part one. And then same for a glycine to alanine substitution, it's going to be the probability of finding a glycine times probability of finding an alanine. So that's basically just two times the probability of alanine times probability of glycine. And then now, in part three, we want to find the actual frequency of A G substitutions in this given block so that we can compare it to the expected frequency that we found in part two. So an A G pair in this case can be a combination of any A and any G as long as it's in the same column. So when we count in terms of pairs here in this question, this allows us to consider both G A and A G substitutions in the sequence. So essentially, we're trying to find out what is the actual frequency that any pair of two residues is a G A pair in this particular sequence. And that is equal to the total number of G A pairs divided by the total number of pairs, single column pairs, so pairs in any column. So to find the number of G A pairs, we can go column by column. So in the first column, for example, this would be one G A pair, this would be another, this would be yet another, so et cetera, et cetera. So basically, in total, in the first column, we have five G A pairs. And so that is based on the first column. And then we see that in the second column, there are no G A pairs, same with the third. But then in the fourth column, we have one G A pair. And then we can keep going column by column and seeing that there are no more G A pairs in the remaining columns. So then in total, there are six pairs in this, in this alignment. So then we need to divide that by the number of single column pairs of any two residues. So how many single column pairs are there? Well, in any one column for there are eight options for the first residue of the pair and then eight minus one, which is seven options for the second residue in the pair. And here, since we only care about the number of pairs and we don't care about the order of residues in each pair, we can divide by two. So the number of pairs per column would basically be fifty-six divided by two or twenty-eight. And then, so that is for one column. And then we can multiply that by the total number of columns in the sequence block and that is ten. So basically, the total number of single column pairs is equal to twenty-eight times ten. And then we can just plug in these values that we found to find the actual probability of A G A substitution in this block. And then in part four, now that we have both the expected and the actual probabilities of GA substitutions, we can calculate the likelihood ratio, which is basically the likelihood of a GA substitution actual over the random likelihood of AG substitution. So that would basically be the value that we found in part three over value in part two. And then finally, from this, we need to calculate the blossom substitution score. So as we have learned in lecture, the substitution score for any two amino acids is equal to two times log base two of the likelihood ratio. And since we have the likelihood ratio, we can now calculate the substitution score. Okay, and I see that the questions in the chat have been answered. So yeah, the first part of the question does ask for the independent probability of each amino acid. All right, so in part B, now we need to consider a matrix that is calculated by including only mammalian relatives. So this would be more related sequence alignments. So what would happen in this case to the substitution scores for any two amino acids? Would they increase, decrease, or stay the same? So to answer this question, we need to understand the substitution score conceptually. So the substitution score or S I J is related to the frequency that an amino acid I is substituted by an amino acid J relative to the frequency of such a substitution that we would expect by random chance, given the relative abundances of I and J in the matrix. So if we use sequences that are more highly related to each other, that would mean that at each position, the sequences would be more conserved than the sequences that are typically in the matrix. So they might look something like something more like this matrix to the right where or this like alignment to the right where I is one type of amino acid, J is another type of amino acid. And obviously, there could be more amino acids, but this is just to show the conservation of sequences at each position. So if these sequences that we use are now very highly conserved, would that increase or decrease the frequency of self substitutions? So amino acid I to I or J to J compared to the original matrix? And you can just type it in the chat or say it. Yeah, so that's right. So the substitution score or the self substitution score in this case would increase. So this would increase because the relative frequency of substitutions of self substitutions, I to I or J to J in a conserved sequence would be higher than what we would expect for a 60, a blossom 62 matrix. And now, would using this highly conserved matrix increase or decrease the frequency of IJ substitutions? So any two different amino acids? Right, so for any two amino acids, two different amino acids, the substitution score would actually decrease because now the relative frequency of substitutions of one amino acid to a different amino acid would be lower than what we would expect for the blossom 62 matrix. So since, since the degree of conservation is basically much higher in this sequence or in this alignment of related proteins, the value of self substitution scores is going to increase while the value of non-identical substitution scores is going to decrease. And that basically means that this matrix is a less accurate representation of how favorable each amino acid substitution is in nature. And that's why when we, when blossom matrix seeds are usually constructed, we don't usually use highly conserved sequences. And then in terms of answering this question, since we don't really know whether we're considering the self substitution scores or different amino acid substitution scores, just give an explanation, I guess, for both of them. Yeah, if there are any questions, you can ask in the chat.
All right, in that case, I'll start going over question number five. All right, let me know if there are any issues with seeing my screen. So for question five, we have three parts. The first of them is on bacteria rhodopsin. And it gives a schematic diagram and asks two questions about potential modifications to the protein. So I think it would be helpful here to go over some basics of the mechanism for bacteria rhodopsin. So if we assume that we are starting at the point where we have deprotonated shift base, which remember is the space over here. Recall that the way that bacteria rhodopsin works is that we start with a proton coming in from the top and through a series of successive transfers between different groups will end up being pumped through the protein. So once we already have this base protonated here, there's essentially two major, two major steps to keep in mind for how the protein functions. And the first these is a conformational change. And the second is the actual proton transfer. So can anyone tell me or out louder in the chat what this confirmational change is that I'm referring to? Right, yeah. So this is the cis-trans isomerization. And can anyone tell me what molecule specifically undergoes this? Right, yeah. So retinal is the one that's related to the conformational change. And then the proton transfer itself, since we're transferring from the shift base in this scenario, can anyone tell me what it gets transferred to? Okay, so yeah, that's right. So this aspartate residue over here, if you'll notice, it's negatively charged. It can act as a proton acceptor. So that's what this proton transfer section is referring to. So in the first part of this, part of the question, the scientist modifies the retinal chromophore in such a way that it can bind to the protein, but all of the double bonds, except for the one responsible for the shift base, shift base has been removed and it no longer acts as a proton pump. So since we're talking about retinal, we know that we need to focus on the conformational change part of things. And the biggest thing to notice here is that if we remove all of the double bonds, remember, the cis-trans isomers are different only because of their orientation about a double bond. So if we remove the double bond, this isomerization can't occur and the proton is stuck up here. For the second part of the question, the SP85 residue is mutated to GLN and the protein no longer works properly. So since we're talking SP85, we know that this has to do with the proton transfer step itself and that the main role of this aspartate residue is as a proton acceptor. And note also that glutamine is not a residue that can accept a proton. So in this case, this actual chemical step would not happen. So the next part of this question talks about the why satisfying backward hydrogen bonds is more important in the membrane than it is for proteins folding in solution. And sort of illustrate this idea, I've drawn out two kind of crude diagrams of just a loop of protein in solution versus in the membrane. Where here, I've used the spikes to indicate side chains that can form hydrogen bonds and these orange spikes in the center to note hydrophobic side chains. So if we start with just our normal situation in solution, there's sort of two things at play here stabilizing this confirmation. First thing to notice is that since we are interacting with water, remember, since these residues can form hydrogen bonds, they're stabilized by their interactions with water, even if they don't form hydrogen bonds amongst themselves. And the second thing to notice is that internally, there's some stabilization by the hydrophobic effect where because we formed this hydrophobic core over here, we've excluded these hydrophobic residues from the outside polar environment and allowed them to interact with each other. If we look at the membrane, we see that that situation has been completely reversed. The first thing to notice is that the hydrogen, the hydrophobic residues that are now on the interior, there is no actual benefit to keeping them in the interior because remember, the environment is now hydrophobic too. And further, we noticed that if these residues can form hydrogen bonds, they can no longer form them with their surroundings. Because again, the internal part of the membrane is hydrophobic. So the only thing left to do to stabilize the structure is for them to start forming hydrogen bonds with each other. And that's why forming hydrogen bonds within the backbone is important here. And then from that, you should be able to explain why secondary structure elements are more important for protein folding in the membrane. And then for the final part of this question, a scientist isolates a membrane which I've just drawn as a box here that transports sodium ions here indicated as the orange dots from inside the bacterium to outside the bacterium. And we'll note here that the concentration of sodium ions inside the bacterium is very low and it's much higher outside of the bacterium. So in this case, would we be transporting sodium with or against this concentration gradient? Right, yeah. So we're transporting against the concentration gradient. So then for the first question, that should just be, that should be straightforward based on that. And then for the second question, I believe there were in-class examples for using energy sources for accomplishing this transport. So any of those or others that are equally plausible are accessible answers here. All right, are there any questions for this, for question five?
Okay, are there any other questions remain for the problems? So there is, there is a question for, question number five.
Right, yeah. So for the last question, light would be an acceptable answer is like if you're drawing analogy to, for example, how bacteria rhodopsin works, you would just have to make it explicit what you mean rather than just simply writing the word light.
Okay, if there's no other question, thank you very, very being here at the tutoring session. We'll see you tomorrow or next week.